Call the meeting to order and ask that you join us in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us on a rather wet time out there. See, our drainage basins are overflowing and we had a lot of rain. Glad you caught your way here through the drops in one way or another. Just a few announcements before we get started. If at any time you can't hear us clearly, please let us know and we'll adjust our microphones. Agendas are available on the table as you come in the door if you didn't get it. And we would ask that you use the sign and sheet and sign in before you leave tonight. The agenda for tonight's meeting has been posted on the building's entrance door and on the township website. The meeting is live streaming on YouTube and will be posted immediately. Recording will also be available through the township website. Written minutes will be available as soon as the board approves them. And there will be two opportunities for public comment. After being recognized by the chair, we'd ask you to step up to the microphone, speak strongly, give us your name and address, and respect our five-minute time limit. With that, we'll do a self-introduction of the board members.
Dave Perez.
Jeff Rogers.
Art Rutledge.
Bob Brown.
Jeff Ronald.
And to my left is Todd Ziegler, our Township Manager. Wendy Brown, our Recording Secretary, has joined us via YouTube. And we have excused Tim Bupp, our Solicitor, from this meeting. So with that, we will go back to our agenda. The first item is approval of the minutes.
Make a motion to approve. Sorry.
Go ahead.
I was making a motion to approve. I think Bob got me.
Alright, so one.
Give it to him and I'll take a second.
Okay, you'll take the second. Alright, are there any questions or comments on the minutes before we vote? I'll ask for a vote to accept the minutes.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative. The minutes are approved as presented. You have the Treasurers' Report in front of you. I would note that we're just under $10,000 in interest, about $600 in fines, and about $125 in rentals for the pavilions. Just a few things we looked at. A slew of solar permits I saw that were on there. And we are a few thousand dollars more in revenues and expenditures, so that's always a good thing. Questions from anybody on any specific item on the Treasurers' Report? Todd, anything you want to comment on?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve in a second, the June Treasurers' Report. Questions before we vote? Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Five votes to the affirmative. We have accepted the Treasurers' Report. Todd, do you want to speak to the tax distribution for EMS and fire, or is this just informational for us here?
It's informational, but get a mic around here, so Wendy can hear me at home. If I don't, she'll tell me about it. Yeah, this is our first distribution. We do two a year, usually in May or June, after the majority of the tax revenue comes in, and then again December 31st for that that comes rolling in after that. The EMS tax, if you recall, we have a flat rate donation we give. It's just $40,000. Rose EMS, which is New Freedom, after Workers' Comp Tax Collector Commission and so forth, their check will be an amount of $143,276.38. And then the fire protection tax distribution, again, this is through June 30th. The Glen Rock Hose and Ladder will be receiving $64,361.13. Rose Fire Company, which is New Freedom, $74,427.11. And Shrewsbury Fire Company located in Shrewsbury Borough is $115,814.63.
Can you talk through what the red lines are?
That's just showing disbursements.
Workers' Comp Tax Collector Commission, et cetera.
Yeah, that's just, that's showing the expense side.
Okay.
Anything that's in red with the parentheses and expense.
So if you add the first three items and subtract the last four items, that gives you the?
The total that they're getting.
The total there.
Okay.
And then on the bottom, we try to keep it running, history of what everyone's been given since the fire tax started in 2006. 2005, we started out at $10,000 for each fire department across the board. That first year, everyone got about $40,000, and then it's been increasing ever since.
How many increases have we made to the fire tax in that time period? Was it three?
No.
Millage increases?
I was going to say it was two.
Two?
Yeah. Only two, yep.
Okay.
Any other questions? You also have the actual versus budget report for the first six months ending June 30th. I've been through it and with Todd in pretty good detail, I don't think we see anything that alarms, anything that's that abnormal or from what we would expect it, so it seems like we are, as usual, running just a little bit under our budget or over if it's receipts, and that's what we try to do.
Very good.
Questions from anybody? Okay. Alright, we have reached the first opportunity for public comment. This is typically used to address items that are on our agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board at this time under public comment? Okay, see a lot of heads shaking, so that's good. We will move on to ordinance and resolutions. We have nothing there. Under subdivision and land development, I guess we're looking for at New Haven first. Glad you got here in all the rain.
Just pass these down.
Will do.
You want to go out and work in a ditch tomorrow morning? For all this? I said you wouldn't want to go out and work in a ditch somewhere tomorrow morning, would you?
I pick my ditch working days where I'm going to doctors and more to get my back. We've been to staff and planning board with our waiver request. What we're doing is subdividing two, one acre lots, septic, and a 20-acre farm at all of New Haven Development. Those properties won't be part of the major development. The ideal farm, of course, is, I really want to say that is an organic produce farm, which I'm trying to be very deliberate. So I can go down through the modification requests one by one and we can look at those. The first one was drawn to scale, at least one inch equals 100 foot. We did that on the plan, it's page two, where there's really details. On page one, is this a condition plan?
Well, I can't be any closer. No, I didn't have the mic turned on. I got a text you can't hear.
Sorry, Wendy.
That's my fault.
As I was saying, the first modification we're requesting is drawn to scale, one inch equals 100 feet. And page one is the only one we need that waiver for. It has a lot of notes. It's just the existing condition plan. Doesn't really have anything of any importance. And it's page two where the real design work is there, and that is drawn to scale. And the, the planning board and the staff both endorsed that recommendation. Do you want me to go down through the whole list, or do you want to vote on them one by one, or?
You have a preference, Todd?
I mean, it doesn't matter. Why don't we just do, because I believe we did them one at a time.
Why don't you take the first?
Yeah.
Yeah, at least the first three, okay?
Well, you mean do the first three, represent them, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, let's just do all. I would do all of them except the one that talks about widening the road and so forth.
Okay, that's fine. We can do that. That's great. I appreciate that.
Yep.
The next one is the EMS plan. And in this situation, because they're two one-acre lots, we have no real plan for houses. We have no plan for where they're going to be.
Right.
So it makes more sense for the builder that's actually doing that to do an EMS plan. And again, that was endorsed by your staff and by the planning board. The third one is the environmental impact assessment, and that was already done for the whole project. So you've really got that for the earlier phase, so there's no use in submitting that again. So that was also, again, supported by staff and by the planning board. The next one that's on the list was the drainage easement, 22-525-1. And it was determined that we don't need that waiver. I requested it, but Jeff pointed out that I really don't need that waiver, so we don't have to act on that one. 22-603-1 is curbs. And 22-606-1 is sidewalks. Both of them really don't make a lot of sense in this area, across the frontage of that part of the property. So again, they were supported by the staff and by the planning board. So.
If I could just address the curb and the sidewalk, their motion included on the condition that the six-month notice added on the plan.
The note was already on the plan.
Okay.
Yeah, I sent that to Jeff and said.
Yeah, it's on the plan, but that needs to be part of the approval.
Yeah, it is on the plan already.
Okay.
Now, did you address 525-1, the drainage easement? Did I miss?
That was determined that we didn't need that.
Okay.
I had, I had it requested, but Jeff pointed out that we really didn't need it.
Okay.
Jeff Schuh you're talking about?
Yes, I am, Jeff Schuh, yes.
Why don't we, I think maybe there'll be a little bit more discussion on 22-505-1. So maybe just to put these to bed, they all seem reasonable to me. So this would be, what is it, five of them, six of them, with the curbs and sidewalks that have our standard six-month comment. So is there?
Let's see, we're not going with the drainage easement though, correct? That one's not needed?
Correct.
That's correct. He's asking for that modification.
Alright, so it looks like five, the first three and then the last two for the curbs and sidewalk. And Todd, you mentioned six months, what? It needs to be on the plan, but.
Yeah, the last two for the curb and sidewalks.
I think Phil already has that on the plan.
Provided there's a note added in the plan that they're required to install curb and sidewalk with six months notice.
Gotcha, okay.
But he already has that.
And that should already be on the plan, but just for the sake of the motive, just to make sure that it stays on the plan.
Correct.
Alright. I feel comfortable making a motion to approve 22403, 22404. Let's just go with the first three and the last two, for the sake of, for the sake of the, okay, wonderful, thank you. Conditional upon the noting on the plan, which is supposed to already be there, but for a six-month installment in the event that it's required in the future. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Jeff.
So we have a motion and a second, and this would be to approve all the modifications you have in front of you except 22-505-1 right now. Questions before we vote? Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Five votes to the affirmative. They are all approved. Talk a little bit about 22-505-1.
Yeah, I actually preferred not to widen the road at all. I know the ordinance, it's a standard to widen it with a 24-foot. It's 20-foot now. I think that widening only supports driving faster. The folks that are farming, I'm partners with the Amish family that live there. We're doing this as a joint venture. And, you know, they're crossing the road all the time with manure and things that they're putting over there. And even just two or three weeks ago, we had someone come around the corner and slide into the produce field. So I didn't want to widen the road, but as a compromise, I proposed widening the road on the south side where, between the New Concord Road and the end of our property, that's, yeah, you've got it. He's doing it good with the arrow. Staff and planters, I'm sorry?
Yes. Yeah, this is Constitution out here.
And that's personal.
This is the railroad tracks, and then this takes you into railroad.
Okay.
And we don't own from the end of our property, of course, up past the railroad tracks or up to Constitution. So it would only be a widening to that point where the railroad tracks are. And I have the opinion that, you know, it's only going to give the incentive to drive faster. It's going to add more stormwater, impervious areas. And this isn't a CEA area. That whole road is in the CEA. Now, I brought some photographs, a photograph today and an overview of the property. And if you look at that field on that, it would be the north side, I think, you can see the slope there. If we do the grading, we're going to have to do a major contour change along there. It wouldn't be just a matter of adding two foot. It's going to be a change of the contours going down to the produce area. And again, all that area is in CEA. And we had to get a waiver for the other side of the road just to tie into that for a small portion of it. So we'd be working in the CEA. And again, that's why I sort of held it to the other side, the south side of Kirshner, because you can see how that's flat, and we wouldn't be doing a lot of changing and grade. We'd only be widening. I wanted to widen the two-foot on that side. As a compromise, I'd even be willing to widen it four-foot on that side and not go over on the side where the CEA is and make a major change in those contours. The staff and the planning board didn't support the waiver. They wanted two-foot widening on, or total four-foot widening. And I guess we didn't really discern whether we had to do that on one side or the other.
They did say two feet on each side.
Each side. And, you know, I'd really love to do what I proposed in my request, and only do a two-foot widening on the south side where it's flat and where it would work. But even as a compromise beyond that, I'd rather do that widening on that side of the road as opposed to trying to do a major grade change through that sloped area.
Now, this is only for that section of Kirshner?
Right. That's all that's going to happen is between.
The rest of Kirshner is going to be the same as it was before. Is this because we're anticipating increased traffic from the development, Todd? That we're going to need a wider road up to the Constitution?
Yeah, let me show this, just as a refresher to everyone. Yeah, as you know, this is the entire track.
Yeah, you're out of here.
Yeah.
It's a little scary right there.
But this is the development that's going to be taking place in New Freedom Borough, because the municipal boundary runs down through here. So this is Shrewsbury Township, this is New Freedom Borough.
And the road proposed is an outlet to that.
Correct.
Okay.
And there's an existing development there, and staff and planning commission, no, that's, it's in New Freedom, but I don't know what the name of it is. They come in up here off of the Constitution a little further.
Oh, never mind.
But.
Hamilton's way far away. Don't mind me.
Anyway, you know, this road was put in as an access drive, and, you know, we believe that the folks that are on this end of the development are probably going to use this access drive. So the idea was that, you know, where the heavier traffic volume is, is where that needs to be widened. So what, what planning commission ended up doing was, these red lines are his property lines. He was requesting just what you see here as a yellow line on the south side. The planning commission denied that request, but they did recommend approval for two-foot widening on each side between the property line up to Concord Road. And then from the property line up to the intersection, and then these bluish aqua colors, they did agree that they would, you know, recommend a waiver to widen that section of the roadway. So the idea is that you'd have a wider road coming out here. And then, you know, depending how all that works out, there is just a short little stub there that the township would probably need to widen a little bit.
And then maintain it.
But we have the maintenance department that can do that.
Was there any discussion of just adding four-foot to one side?
There was not. There was not.
Is that plausible?
Well, the only thing I would say just to keep in mind is if you come over here four feet, at some point in time, if this is ever widened and improved by the township, you're going to have to come in four feet on this side where the farmhouse is.
Yeah, I understand.
To be consistent.
I think that's, you know, if you look at, if you see the grading there.
That's, that was my next question.
You know, that's where it makes sense to widen it, even if the township does it someday. And I understand that and would agree to that. But if you go on that south side, you can see some of that dotted stuff that's wetlands and streams. You're in some major mess. And if you try to widen that, it's going to be, just like anybody else, it's going to be a lot of work. Just, just at one point that I made, that intersection's really terrible there. And the one that comes out of that neighborhood now is one of the best intersections in Southern York County. I mean, this is a wide, open, big space. But I understand, I acknowledge that people will probably come there and use that terrible intersection. And, you know, I can only do the widening from my property back. We really would, you know, if it's going to be four-foot, I'd really like to request that we do it on that side where it's flat and not go over towards the stream, not make that major grade change. And, and I understand, even for the township though, that might be better because it would soften that curve a little bit, you know, as you're coming around that corner from, from railroad. And if it's wider there, that makes more sense, in my opinion, to negotiate that curve there in front of the farmhouse.
All that widening would be to the opposite side of the skewed intersection there, right?
It would be.
So it would be.
Towards New Freedom, not towards Shrewsbury.
Right, it would be toward, so it would, it would, it would make that intersection a little bit more lopsided, for lack of a better word.
Well, actually, you could do.
Because strawberries come out.
I'm not widening the part that's up there, so if the township wanted to widen it on the other side.
That's true, you are. You're correct.
They could, we could, trust me, we could make that work in a little bit of a.
That's right, you're not.
What direction does the water currently flow off that street? Because if we're, if we're widening it and it's going the wrong direction, all that water is going to flood the, the field you have there on the left.
There's a.
Which would be problematic for growing things.
Yeah. I plan on putting a really good, strong fence system right through here, because I really am concerned. We did have that car just go off the road there a couple of weeks ago right into the field. I want to put that fence there, so I require like a crossing at one spot. So when the boys are coming across the street and manure and everything, they have to come that one way. It's going to throw things off a little bit. If you ever watch them working out there with the horses, they need a little room to turn around, and sometimes they get up into the road, but they're going to have to just work down there on the bottom. And I really want to put a fence along that area there, so we don't have as much of an opportunity. And plus, that would limit the crossing to one spot, you know? And I think that would make a lot of sense instead of, because right now they just all go down there wherever there's eleven kids.
They got some small children there.
They do, and they all negotiate the road and.
That's their way, I know.
There's eleven of them.
Eleven.
And, you know, I thought, I've been thinking through this because I really had a concern about it. And if we put a fence here and just have one area where there's gate, then, then that's where they're going to have to cross.
That would make more sense.
And we can do that. And I'd love to just leave that slope like it is, put the fence there, let them work the field the way they've been working the field, and widen it on the other side. And if it's four-foot, it's four-foot. That's even, that's still better than me trying to do something on that side where all that slope is. And in the, in the CEA.
I mean, it's my feeling, and it's planning commission and engineer, that we should be four-foot, but it doesn't seem to me like it would make a difference if that was all on one side. Do you see anything negative, Todd?
Well, that's where I'm at, too.
Yeah, no, the only thing I had mentioned was, when this gets widened up through here at some point in time, it's going to be.
It'll just be closer to the farmhouse.
It's going to be closer to the farmhouse, and I heard the argument earlier, you know, traffic and, and speed and the kids and everything else, that we're actually going to be making it closer to the house, the roadway. That's anything I, I mentioned.
By two feet.
But, and the other thing about that is on that other side of the road, trust me, if you go look at that grade there, that's right, that's why you see that, that line, that's, the stream is right there at that point. It really curves in. You can see how it makes a turn in there. In the other parts, it's out wider away from the field, but there it comes right in close to that road. And it's going to be a major project to widen it on that side of the road in the future. You know, for us, it's going to be an issue because of the grade. And, and we do plan on moving the driveway once Concord is extended, because that curve is terrible to come out, even for me driving in and out of there, but for them in the horse and wagon stuff. That curve is terrible. When you, when you come, and people fly through there. When you come down there, you just can't see around that bend for the woods and everything. So, you know, yeah, it's two-foot closer to the farmhouse, but I think it's still, it's not down there in, in the wet area. And it's, if we move the driveway, there's, we can do the same thing on that side. Put a fence right at that four-foot widening area and keep everybody from there and just have one crossing area. That's it.
Phil, are you saying this, this area is the wet area?
No, 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 up at the end where you're going to future, crossing the house.
Crossing the house here.
Yeah, even further up. See that?
Where the blue is?
Yeah, see that dotted areas? That's, that's why it's dotted. It's wet. And I'm saying, when you, if you try to widen it on that side of the road, I know you think, if you look at my photograph and what it looks like there along the field, it gets a lot worse as you go towards the house down in that little bottom.
You're, you're saying this area is all wetlands?
No, up above it.
Oh, oh, this area is.
That's the field, yeah, yeah.
And I'm saying if you widen that four-foot there, you're going to be encroaching in that stuff.
Well, it would only be two, but it's not, yeah, you'd certainly be getting closer.
I, I'd much rather have it on, if you widen someday, I'd rather have four-foot towards the farmhouse on that solid ground than on the other side.
I feel comfortable making a motion.
Comments?
I'll make, I'll second it.
Let's have a motion.
Motion to approve 22-505-1 on the condition that it is four feet towards the New Freedom side of Kirshner Road.
I'll second it.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Questions or comments before we vote? Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Five votes to the affirmative, so with that one change, that's approved as well.
Thank you, Ray.
We'll put it on one side. Thank you, Phil.
Good explanation.
Alright, we have a security reduction request, Todd?
Yeah, this is pretty much a formality. Typically, well, not typically, when we do receive these, we receive them from the engineer of the developer. They propose what they would like to see reduced as far as the bonding and security. This particular case, as you can see, C.S. Davidson has reviewed it. They are recommending a reduction, that it be released in the amount of $868,270.70, leaving a remaining balance of $43,164. As you can see, it's for Theater Road Project KV Land, also known as Willard Ag.
Okay.
120 Theater Road.
Alright.
So that's the township engineer's recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the security reduction. Questions before we vote? Ask for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Five votes to the affirmative. We've approved the 123 Theater Road Security Reduction Request. And that moves us to US Industrial Club, the El Drive Warehouse. Is this just an extension?
This is an extension to 90 days. Talking to the folks with the warehouses, probably will not get them recorded within 90 days. So I'm going to ask the board if you would consider granting an extension through the rest of this year, December 31 of '25.
And we would be doing exactly the same thing to the Shrewsbury Industrial.
Yeah, and I would do it, since we want them to run concurrent through the process, correct.
So it's a six-month extension, roughly?
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're very close to be having everything wrapped up, but that way we don't have to come back in three months.
So you're asking for an extension of?
For the US Industrial Club.
Yeah, how long?
Through December 31 of '25.
Six months then, basically. End of the, okay, okay. I'd written 90 days by mistake, because that's what we usually. I'd written ninety days by mistake, cause that's what we usually do. All right, questions or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the extension.
I'll second it.
So I have a motion and a second to, um, extend by another six months. The approval was for both of the warehouses off El Drive. Questions before we vote? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 I vote for the affirmative, so we have approved those two extensions.
Well done, gentlemen.
It was easy for you tonight. All right, we're, um, looking at, uh, reports. The first is the manager's report. Todd, anything you wanna emphasize or, um, anything anybody wants to question?
I'd like to know what happened with M and M and baking.
Well, we're still working on that. I'm waiting on my phone call.
Yeah, that's, um, extremely unfortunate.
I will follow up with them, but.
Right now they're banned from the parks, but I think they owe us more than that because we're gonna have to spend some money to remove marge and soil and power wash and.
We, we had a food vendor use one of our parks and they were emptying the oil. And they said they put it in a plastic container and there's oil all over the parking lot, the walking path. They ran over and put it in the parking lot island in the landscaped area, and then they have a bunch that they dumped over in the lawn area, so.
Where did it all come from?
The fryers that they had.
Over how long of a period of time?
All that one evening.
I guess.
Good God!
So.
So I, I know a little bit about frying oil, but wow.
Todd, do you know if we have anything in an ordinance that's prohibiting data centers in Agland?
We, we don't have data centers specifically, no.
I have that, um, just so you know, that's one of three things I've identified that I think we, we need an ordinance for. And there is a model ordinance that, um, York County did, and there are a couple of others, so. And the big thing is noise that comes from those. Um, and I do think we need to do something because the two warehouses, somebody could decide to take that, one of those warehouses and make it a data center. So, so we do need to, I think, address that, and Todd and I have talked about that. Uh, but back to the, um, park, I think the, uh, M and M baking or whatever. Um, I think Todd is pursuing that, cause I think they do need to make us hold in addition to not being allowed in the parks. But it also probably points out that we need a little bit of a regulation on food trucks in, in, anywhere on township property. They, they should be permitted. We should make sure they're inspected. There should be a fee. We should make sure that they're operating safely, not blocking, making people walk through the parking lot. In this case, people were waiting on the walking trail, so that interferes with other people's use, so. We've got a list of things, and I told Todd I would try to start something there, and maybe we can put something fairly simple together, but it. And that they know that they're responsible for any damage that they create, cause they certainly did do that. There is a, um, yard sale, I guess, a community yard sale at Miller Park Saturday, and there are two food trucks there. So Todd is trying to check to make sure one of them is not them trying to come, come back, Jim.
I have to imagine the.
Is this the rec thing?
Pennsylvania Department of, uh, Environment and Protection would probably be upset about dumping of oil.
They'd get very upset if it gets near water.
Yeah, it's not near a water source and it's, I mean, they're large areas, but I don't think it ran anywhere. I mean.
But we're upset enough to make up for it. Uh, a good question, they're both good questions, Bob. Any, any other questions or Todd, anything else you wanna?
Now there, I just wanted to note that I am going to be applying for a grant, uh, through Penn Dot's Transportation Alternatives Set Aside Program. They call it TASSA. Um, it opens July fourteenth and the pre-app closes September fifth. Uh, it's a reimbursable grant, and what I'm gonna apply for is the remaining balance that we need for the curb and sidewalk project around Mount Airy. And, um, East Forest Avenue. The amount that we'll be requesting is two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We've already received seven hundred and seventy thousand grants.
So that would pretty much cover the project, right?
Yeah, this would, this would cover the project.
Give us almost a million.
Just short of a million dollars, so.
Right.
So I'll be working on that. Other than that, I don't have anything else to report.
Do you wanna comment on, um, the fireworks issue in case somebody hears something or can collect any information?
Oh, yeah, I, or I could do that in, uh, maintenance.
Okay, we'll do it there.
When, since we have their report there.
That, that makes sense. We'll do it there. Any other questions on, um, Todd's report? All right, you have the code enforcement, city enforcement zoning report. Um, Todd's done some work on that. It's organized, I think, a, a good bit better.
It is better, but you have extra pages this month. It won't be as many.
Well, yeah, there's a lot of pages, cause all the closed ones are on there, but.
Yeah.
Are there specific questions on anything? There are a ton of things on handy dandy dumpster. And I guess they've said they may take it to the zoning hearing board, but.
Yeah, but I have to, I have to reach out to Keith, cause I don't know what the status of that is.
Right, we're not gonna wait for that, so you're gonna push Keith. Questions on anything else? All right, I did skip solicitor because we don't have a, a report from him, nothing really he needs, needed to report on.
Did you want to talk about the Murphy Dittenhaver under?
Yeah, you wanna do that? Yeah, that's a good, yeah.
Yeah, did you wanna, want to do that? You want me to?
You can give us another, this is an update on Murphy Dittenhaver, as you know, we have the, um, agreement that we supposedly reached with them.
Yeah, um, we, we were in some litigation with Murphy Dittenhaver, who was the architect for this building. And, uh, we went into non-binding arbitration and we did reach a settlement agreement. The, uh, total amount that we settled on is sixty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. Twenty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars of that, um, is credit that's being given to the township for balances of invoices that we still owed. And then, uh, we will also be receiving a thirty-five thousand dollar cash payment, uh, for that settlement. Uh, Murphy Dittenhaver and the township has signed it, so that should be wrapped up within the next week.
By the next board meeting, it should be history.
Correct.
And we should have collected that. Thank you. So that takes us to, um, the maintenance report, uh, I guess, um, before Todd gets to the little update on the speeds, all the other questions on anything else?
Comment on Magnolia Drive. Shrewsbury's well pleased with that. The only thing that concerns me is it says, Dad, going smooth now, we'll all get speed problems going around the loop there.
It was a nicely.
It's real nice.
Guys did a good, real, I drove through that too. They did a really nice job on that. I, I told Mike that, they did a, a real good job. Okay, Todd, you wanna talk about, um, the speed study?
Yeah, let me pull that up here.
This is, as you know, a continuation of the speed study on Wendy Hill Road. Where we moved the, the one sign up the hill, the one radar sign up the hill a little bit. Didn't make a lot of difference.
No, it did not. Um, first let me pull up the, uh, location map here, so everyone's more familiar with that.
I think the one you have in your packet, um, we actually have to make a change to.
Yeah, this is eight fifty-one out here. This is coming down Wendy Hill Road, Deer Creek Road, and then up here's Tauna, and then Wendy Hill continues out to the Susquehanna Trail. Uh, as you know, this resident has expressed concerns with, uh, alleged speeding and so forth in this section of roadway. Um, we do have a radar, speed radar sign set up here, collecting data which catches traffic heading down the hill toward the railroad crossing. The initial location of this one coming, uh, you know, south, be southwest direction. Uh, we had here initially, but, you know, people slow up at the curve and, and the railroad crossing and so forth. So we did move it further up the hill. We were able to find a location flat enough, cause a lot of that drops off pretty steep. And what we found here.
It's still hard to speed going uphill.
Yeah. There we go. Um, location A, I, I tried to compare the same direction, you know, that southwest direction going up the hill. Location A was where we had the initial, uh, sign set. As you can see, ninety-nine point four percent of the, of, uh, fifty-two thousand vehicles was going, the speed limit of thirty-five or below. Um, and those that are ten miles per hour or over, they posted speed, and the reason we use that is, um, that's what Penn Dot uses to consider that whether or not there's a speeding problem. Um, out of that fifty-two thousand, we had three cars. Keep in mind, that was railroad crossing, uh, coming around the curve. So we moved it further up the road, as you know, uh, location B. Um, numbers still look good. This number should be seventy-eight. I want to correct that, and I did not do that on this one. Nonetheless, the percentage is the same, uh, of the thirty-four thousand cars, we still have two more weeks to go. Uh, thirty-four thousand cars, eighty-seven and a half percent were at the speed limit or below. Uh, point two percent, ten miles per hour, and that number's actually seventy-eight, cause that starts right here. As you can see, coming around the corner, out of those fifty-two thousand cars, the, the highest clock speeds were forty-six to fifty, and that was three vehicles. Uh, with the new location, we had two out of the thirty-four thousand, the highest speed was clocked at fifty-six to sixty miles per hour. So all indications are unless things really change over the next two weeks, while of course there is some speeding that is occurring. Um, it, it's not considered a speeding problem under, uh, enforcement.
So right now it would be hard to convince either Penn Dot, since it's a state road, or the state police that there was any thing that needed to be done regarding speeding there. And once it's all done, you'll make sure the, um, resident gets that information.
Correct, and I did send out the, the information we had at that point, uh, after.
I'm sure it can seem a lot faster when you're sitting on a porch that sits right on the road, but, um, the, the, the fi- the figures don't lie. It is what it is. And talk about fireworks?
Yeah, we, uh, we learned on Monday morning, uh, as you know, S Y C has their ball fields and so forth at Wendy Hill Park. Um, it was brought to their attention by someone. They went over and then, of course, they contacted the township, but, uh, Fourth of July, that night about ten-thirty, there were some cars that came rolling in. They were there a good hour, hour and a half. And, uh, set off a lot of fireworks. That in itself, you know, was okay. But they did it out on the field and they were on the ground, and, you know, they have these sinkhole, well, not sinkholes, these divots and everything throughout the field now. Um, one of them melted the, I think it was home, home plate.
Good lord!
Um, but we do have some video. It's not the best video. If you recall, the board, you approved new sur- uh, video surveillance system for down there, but that's not scheduled to go until the twenty-eighth of this month. Um, so we do have some video. Of course, you can't read any license plates or anything, but, um, there's, there's one vehicle in particular that looks, you don't see too many of them around. And it appears to be a Dodge Nitro. I don't know about anybody else, but I don't see too many of them around. Um, and, uh, so anyway, we did provide what video recordings we had with the state police. They have sound, so maybe they can pick up someone yelling someone's name or something and help piece it together. And, uh, so that's kinda where we're at, but S Y C is gonna have some money they're gonna have to spend to fix up their fields.
A shame.
Yeah.
So you're, you're gonna, um, deliver information or talk to the immediate homeowners? And then beyond that, you're kinda looking at what the state police think we ought to do by asking social media, hey, did you see anything? Did you hear anything? Did you?
Yeah, we, um, we, we actually hand-delivered letters to both directions on Wendy Hill Road.
They already did?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, we did that, uh, actually this afternoon.
Okay, good.
Uh, asking any residents that maybe have some video footage that might capture Wendy Hill Road to help us clearly identify at least the, the type of make, model of the vehicle, which I think would be helpful to the state police as well, so. We'll see if we hear anything back from them.
The video, there was kind of a parade of cars then, and it appeared to be older teenagers, I guess, for the most part.
That's what, that's what it looks like, what you could see of it.
What it looks like, yeah. So at any rate, if you hear anything, if somebody brings information to you or, you know, question it, it'd be great to find out who did it. Obviously, they've outlined a lot of things, including the parks are closed at dusk, and the fireworks and the damage.
Attacked trespassing charge on top of the rest. I would imagine setting off fireworks that close to eighty-three would also be a potential problem.
So.
Well, that close to a building, can't be any closer than a hundred and fifty feet under state law. And where they shut some of those off, it was no one hundred and fifty feet.
So just an update, so you're aware and, and keep your ears to the ground. Anything else, Todd?
No, that's all that I have.
You have the engineer report. Um, it's pretty self-explanatory unless somebody has questions. You have the recreation commission report. And again, I, Jeff sits on that committee, so you can always ask him if there are questions.
I guess we should, um, let the board know.
Yeah, I think so.
The, uh, rec director, Gina Porter, uh, submitted her resignation on Saturday.
Were you aware?
By email.
Well, with Todd's email, but I didn't know she was.
My understanding is she's moving from the area, getting married and was looking for more funds, so higher pay. Uh, I believe, well, she'll be done the end of July.
So there are a lot of loose ends and a lot of things in process, and a lot of pieces are gonna have to be put together. And find somebody else to carry forward, and it kinda sets them back a little bit in that goal at the end of the fourth year of being self-sustaining, but, um, we'll deal with that like we do everything else.
So we can do.
What's the, um, hiring process look like there, Todd, since it's a joint venture?
Well, they're actually, through our intermunicipal agreement, they're actually an employee of New Freedom Borough.
Right.
So that's.
They're the people that have to.
Yeah, they'll, um.
Interview and.
But if I remember correctly, I went to pull it, I didn't get a chance to yet, but I believe the rec commission actually interviews the candidates. And they make a recommendation to the two governing bodies, New Freedom Borough Council and Shrewsbury Township Board of Supervisors. And they have to approve who that individual is.
Okay.
And there's also a role played by, um.
D C N R.
Who gave us the grant.
Right, yeah, we have a circuit rider grant that helps fund that salary for four years, which is Pennsylvania Department of Conservation Natural Resources. Uh, we just finished up year one of that grant, so there's three years remaining on it, uh, so they'll be involved in that process.
Yeah, they set in on the initial interviews. Um, they backed off when it came time to make a decision, but they set in on the interviews. So there is a process and a procedure, and that'll move forward, I'm sure. Uh, you have the information from engineer. Um, I don't think there's anything there. Um, I guess on fire and, um, EMS, Todd, you wanna talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, um.
Brad's memo?
Brad Doggerman, who's fire chief with Shrewsbury Fire Company, uh, is requesting that the, uh, board approve, uh, change in their, um, what they call their call boxes, and that has to do with whose first due, second due, and who they call, uh, depending on the type of emergency. So he lists here is to, to add the next due rescue to all vehicles, vehicle accidents with entrapment calls. That would make for two rescues on entrap- That would make for two rescues on entrapments. So. What he's saying is if Shrewsbury's called out for an entrapment. That box call would automatically dispatch one along with them. Instead of waiting for them to get on the scene and find out they need another one. So that would be the first change. Um, then, uh, add a fifth engine to all first alarm structure fire calls, uh, residential and high risk. And it says about please, uh, you know, use the engine from a mutually company that's not already dispatched on the first alarm. Of course, that will vary depending on where that, that fire call is. But they're required under the, uh, York County Department of Emergency Management. Any changes to those call boxes within the respective municipality has to be approved by the governing body.
And I think the thing is, most of these, they wind up requesting that additional backup unit almost right away. But it takes it longer to get there.
Right, and this would allow it to happen automatically.
Dispatch it automatically. I think it makes sense.
So. We, I don't think we need a motion, it's just if there's a consensus, we can put that in the minutes.
So we can move forward. Interesting to note, just statistically, if you take all the incidents. Ninety-two of the two-hundred-and-sixty incidents are canceled and routed. And I've had discussion with Brad, it, it does look like there's not much they can do about that, but. That's a lot of volunteers turning out and then turning around and coming back and a lot of money involved to do that. It's thirty-five percent of this calls through the first six months.
What's the reason for that?
Well, I think.
Not as bad as they thought, they would, didn't need a second.
Or an engine they didn't know if it would be able to turn out for sure, like if it's in Maryland, Maryland line. It's, um, so it's, they've got somebody there. That happens.
Cause what, what probably happens is the same thing that they're talking about here, they, for vehicle accident, they might dispatch. You know, Shrewsbury and Maryland line or. And then Maryland line gets there first and it's just like, oh, they, we don't need Shrewsbury, and then they'll cancel them and route.
Gotcha, okay.
And forty-nine of the calls, which is nineteen percent, and eighty-eight of the calls, thirty-four percent. That was the Shrewsbury Borough and Shrewsbury Township. So that's only fifty-three percent of all the calls. The rest are Hopewell twelve percent, New Freedom five. North Hopewell five, Springfield five, and then others twenty-one percent. Of course, it works the other way too, other companies come in here, but. When you look at our fire tax and all, it's a shame that we're, we're covering fifty percent of the calls. That aren't in our area. I don't know as much you could do about that either, but it's just some numbers.
And, and a good number of those are eighty-three, which, uh, while, while in our area has absolutely no impact on.
I think eighty-three.
On us or our, our residents.
I think eighty-three should be its own reporting.
Uh, one, one question though, this call box change seems like it's going to be adding or increasing. The number of vehicles are gonna be responding. But like you were saying, thirty-five percent of Shrewsbury's calls were canceled and routed. So it, it almost seems like it could be doing the same thing, but for other, other fire companies that are gonna be canceled and routed. Once Shrewsbury gets there and it's like, oh, it's not as bad as we thought.
Agree, that looks like it could, although according to Brad, they called in almost right away.
Okay.
They just lose the time between their dispatch.
Yeah.
And getting on the road. So it might not make that much difference.
Alright.
But. Always interesting to look at things statistically and it makes you think we're paying for other things and. Like, I think if eighty-three were reported separately, it would make its difference.
Sure.
It's like when I came up today, I noticed eighty-three was hardly moving when I pulled in to meet with Todd this afternoon. And I saw that, uh, three tractor trailers and SUV in action at two sixteen, the Glen Rock interchange. So.
I said, there, there was one last week just south of exit four that had the interstate shut down. I was coming north, saw all the flashing lights, I'm not entirely sure.
So I guess that's one that. That's in the township, right, Todd? Eighty-three at the Glen Rock interchange?
No, that's Springfield. Just outside.
That's outside in Springfield, okay. So that's kinda the fire EMS. Uh, you have several reports from Stan. One is just kinda the weather related, one is what went on in Glen Rock with the cleanup after a house fire. And New York County Civil Disturbance Plan, so, um, they're just there for information. I'm sure you could ask Stan if there are questions about any of it.
They could probably use you down in Texas now.
Yeah, could use him, couldn't they? So you have a, we're the zoning and, um, planning commission and zoning hearing board. Uh, short-term rental committee, we pretty much are hopefully pretty much done with that work. It's, um, sitting in York County, uh, planning commission hands for them to review it and potentially comment. And we, um. I guess I've kinda finished the, the next phase we had for the sewer committee, so we need to get some meetings together with the boroughs. And, um, other users and kinda see where we can go from there, unless you have anything to add to any of those. Supervisors comments, um, you have my comments in front of you, if there are questions, you can certainly always, um. Ask me about that. Actually, if you see there, um, Bob Fairfield Township had a text amendment for a data center. And there were some fairly shortages in, we thought in their ordinance, so it was recommended it not be adopted. But I mean, that's one township that just now looked at it. Anything else that, uh, no, I did have a meeting with, um, the small Paul Smith Library Board. And just kinda regarding the library status and where we go next. I was not able to attend a meeting that they held jointly, um, a couple of days ago with Paul Smith Library and Mason Dixon. And, uh, to kinda determine the next, next step in that whole library status fiasco. There's certainly a strong group, uh, working on that that'll hopefully keep the, um, York County library system buzzers at bay. Questions on anything? You have the letters that, um, I sent to Governor Sappero, Sappiero, to, um. Kate Clunk and to, uh, Kristen Phillips Hill regarding the reset board. Which essentially would take us out of the loop and being able to, um, determine where. There are two going forward, so this is, I think, um, solar, uh, so that they can't dictate where, where these things would go. So we talked about that at the last meeting, so they were the letters that went out. Any comments from any other supervisors on anything?
I went up to help Shrewsbury Fire Department out at the carnival.
Does it get rained out?
The bingo, I worked in bingo hall.
You didn't get rained out that night, did you?
No, it was a good night.
Thank you for doing that, so we had some township representation there. It was hot, yes?
It was hot.
Anything else?
I think we have to stay on top, you know, like you wrote the letters to the governor and to our representatives, because. New Jersey now is attempting to use eminent domain to, to take a historic farm to put affordable housing on.
To put a what?
Affordable housing. So they wanna use eminent domain to take his farm.
And P Sats is, um, strongly, strongly working to, um, defeat those two measures too.
Kristen's against it too, and Kate Clunk's against it, but you know, you're, you're dealing with, uh, the representatives in the Philadelphia and Pittsburgh.
Exactly.
Under old business, we're going to, um, table that agreement until, um, August. I think the families just asked for a little bit more time to look at it, but we don't anticipate. Any issues or objections, I don't think, Todd.
No.
With, uh, the park, you know.
Yes, with the park, with the, uh, acquisition, so. C S Davidson completed all the surveying, there was a meeting with the family that, Todd, and did Jeff Schu attend that too?
Yes, and Keith Hunning.
So, did you?
Yeah.
Okay, good, I, I was out of town, so, um, everything seemed to be positive, it looks like that's moving forward. So new business, we have a resignation from the zoning hearing board. It is, um, very much health-related unfortunately for Henry Young. So we need to put our heads together, I think the, uh, current, um, I think Scott, the current.
Scott Myers is the current alternate.
Right, he's.
And I did talk to him and he is willing to be appointed to fill that position.
So we need to put our heads together and think about an alternate, so he might.
Yeah, I talked to Scott, he's, he's willing to take that position.
Right, so we need to look at the alternate. So, something to think about, we have three members, so hopefully, um, we can spend a little time to think about that. Certainly let Todd know if you have any suggestions.
We, we should, uh, take a motion.
Do we have to accept his resignation?
Yeah, you should vote to accept his resignation, and if you want, you can just include in that same motion if you're comfortable. Appointing Scott Myers to fill that position.
Okay, that makes sense.
Is that gonna be for the, uh, the remainder of the term?
Correct. Yeah.
Don't ask me how long it is.
Perfectly fine.
I'll make a motion that we accept, uh, Henry Young's resignation from the zoning hearing board and appoint Scott Myers to replace him.
Second.
So a motion, two seconds, so, um.
In theory, it already passed, I'm kidding.
True. To make it, um, legal, we will vote.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative, so we have, unfortunately, accepted Henry's resignation and appointed Scott Myers. How long did Henry serve?
I don't know that answer. I can get that, I'll send him a, a letter.
Yeah, so we, we should send a letter thanking for his service and, um, regret that he has.
And I'll copy the board, cause I'll, I'll put that information in, but he's, he's been on since I've been here.
Yeah.
We made a resolution.
We can do that too.
Yeah, we'll do a little research on that.
Okay, you'll fix that up for us to vote on the next meeting? Can do a resolution. Okay, um, Todd, this letter of intent.
Yeah, this is a continuation, if you recall, through Pennsylvania D C E D. We received, uh, grant funding along with River Borough, Shrewsbury Borough, Glen Rock Borough, New Freedom Borough. And we even had Cador's Township and Springfield Township participate as well. And we got together and the, uh, uh, peer-to-peer consultant. Who was actually the former retired fire chief at York City, John Senef. He did the peer-to-peer study and evaluated the fire services that are provided to each of those boroughs and the township. Um, of course, the three fire departments that serve us are Glen Rock, Rose, which is New Freedom, and then Shrewsbury. The boroughs, of course, are served by just one, we're served by three. So they did complete that study, there was a presentation given on that, uh, probably three months ago or so. Um, and there are several recommendations that, you know, could be implemented now. Most of that has to do with kind of forming an organization. Where, where the, where the fire companies meet with elected officials, administrative staff, and they work together. So it would be some policies to set up with that. And then the idea would be that, you know, take a look if, if there's any. If it makes any sense to do any kind of, uh, you know, merger or consolidation or, um, you know. Keep the same three fire companies as they are, but just maybe have a little different, uh, setup in leadership and administration and so forth. So anyway, with this letter of intent is. D C E D did tell us that they could provide funding. To provide Mr. Senef's, uh, consulting time to help us set things up and get things moving along. Uh, with some of those recommendations, however, each municipality that wants to participate would have to approve this letter of intent.
And this is basically to receive a grant to cover the consultant.
Correct.
Fees.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the letter of intent?
Second.
We have a motion and a second that we would approve the, uh, said letter of intent. Questions? Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative, we have so approved. Uh, Todd, you wanna talk about an alley?
Yeah, there's nothing we need to do tonight on this, um, but I did wanna bring to your attention. Uh, this is just right outside of Glen Rock Borough. When I do that, that makes it smaller. This is Manchester Street, um, there's the, I believe it's the V F W in Glen Rock, Wetzel used to be down here. Uh, Glen Rock Borough is down here, so this is Manchester Street heading out into the township. We have Ronald Street, we have Glenview Road, there's a unnamed alley and. To this point, we have not been able to find any documentation that that's ever been dedicated as a public street. Um, and the reason this came up, one of the residents, um, contacted us regarding some concerns with the road starting to break up. And so forth, so we're gonna continue to do a little more research, you know, pulling all the deeds, they just reference an alley. Three of these properties don't even reference that, uh, just these two here. But these three along Manchester Street, of course, they were built first. And it's interesting because if you go up here Ronald Street, maybe from this point up another two hundred feet. Is where we had that, uh, other unnamed alley that had about eighteen homes on it. Um, that was never dedicated as a township street. And then that street, if you remember, actually continued on and was partially in Glen Rock Borough and came to a dead end. Um, and Glen Rock Borough never accepted that either, so. Of course, Glen Rock Borough and, and Shrewsbury Township, you know, informed the residents that it's a, a public, I'm sorry, a private street. Um, and, you know, we can't spend public funds on a private drive. So I just, if anybody hears anything about this, we are looking into this, doing a little research, but everything we've found so far. Doesn't look like it was ever dedicated.
Well, who's been, Glen Rock's been plowing snow on it though, right?
Well, which one?
The one there by Beaumont's.
Yeah, and they did up at the other one too.
Okay, so that's where some of the confusion is coming from too.
Correct.
It's any sample letter, they're about to tell me what they're doing anymore.
Yeah, because the borough, the borough and the township at, at one point even did some paving up on that private ri- drive. So that's where all the, well, you know.
Yeah. So has there been maintenance done over the years on this?
On this alley?
Yeah.
Oh, clearly.
Yeah, well, who's, who's doing that?
Yeah, it would have been the township.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But that doesn't set a precedent for the future if it's.
No, I mean.
No.
In fact, like you said, we legally can't spend.
Right.
Public money on private drives.
So anyway, I just wanted to let you know that.
Okay.
We're doing a little more.
In case you hear anything.
I'm glad you told me tonight, so, cause I'll probably run into him over the weekend again.
Is parcel thirty-two, their, their driveway comes out on that? Is that the only one?
No, there's three, parcel thirty-two, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine.
Right.
They're the three that come out on that.
Okay.
Yep, that's all I have.
All right, maybe the highlight or low light of the evening, we have a brave man with us here tonight. Obviously, before we start, I'll just tell you, you have a very, very discontented board. Extremely unhappy with the performance and the fact that it happened one week and then a week and a half later it happened again. But even much worse, and in our mind, it just seems like there's no control. I mean, if you look at the map where these took place, the last one just looks like the truck didn't even run the route. Now, how that happens and the driver comes back hours early and somebody doesn't question, how'd you get done so early? There are so many ways it seems like this could have been recognized and it wasn't. I mean, it just, it's, it's very scary to us. It puts a lot of load on the township employees because our two ladies at the phones take most of the grief. We take some from residents and, and just before, so you know, it's totally unacceptable. It can't happen again, so we'd like you to tell us why it happened, how it happened, what's already been done. So we'd like you to tell us why it happened, how it happened, what's already been done to make sure it doesn't happen. Because if it happens again, we have a real issue in front of us. So you don't have a friendly audience, but I thank you for coming. And, uh, being able to, um, come and, and talk to us. So I'll just kinda let you talk through it a little bit if you can.
Okay, sure. First off, my name's Ron Tudor. I'm the district manager at Penn Waste. Um, good evening, everybody. I completely agree with you. It's totally unacceptable. Uh, that's not how we operate our business. Um, we have some new people in place that, um, we could have done a better job of training them to make sure that the communication. With the township of what's going on. Um, the larger part, I believe, was on Saturday, right? Yes, on Saturday, seven, three? Yeah, just, um, I, I, the board hasn't seen this before. I just kinda put this together before I met with, uh, Mr. Tudor yesterday. I'm a visual person, so I, I wanted to do this. The first missed area was what you see highlighted in the green here.
And that was two hundred and?
I believe it was around two hundred and thirty stops or so. And then on. June twenty-seventh, we had just a short little piece. Uh, it was nine properties on Rockville Road before it goes out into Cadoras Township. But then, um, on Thursday, July third, we had this area. Down, and it was mostly, uh, Keeney, Keeney Sunset Development. And then, uh, Saturday, which wouldn't have been normally Friday, was, was all this area up in here in between.
Well, some of that is also Wednesday, normal Wednesday pickup. We didn't get our recycle picked up. Trash left, went. But we didn't.
Thursday.
Thursday, they picked up re- trash.
Yeah, this is all recycle.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
But that was on, that was on, uh, Thursday with us.
So some of the things that we've done since this, actually, um, is we, our drivers work by maps, right? Kind of it looked like this. They're just working up a little bit for each route. Uh, we've recreated new routes. Um, we actually have a new software system that's coming in where they're actually gonna work off of tablets. So it'll run right in a row. So each house will be lined up in the order that it, that it goes. And as it gets checked off, we'll be able to see it on our computer and dispatch. One of the other things that we've done is, you know, we've made sure our supervisor contacts the township every day that the service is done. To make sure that, you know, to let, let everybody know that it's done, the routes are done, uh, they're finished for the day, to see if they've had any issues called in. That we can take care of while we're still here. Um, and also to come in and personally meet with the township at least, you know, once a month. But to contact everybody or contact y'all as they get done every day.
Now, if we can comment on that, uh, to interrupt you just a minute, we had a meetings, you know, I guess, a month ago or a little bit more, Todd, you and I sat with.
With Andrew and Aaron.
And at that time, we established that there would be a weekly meeting.
Okay.
However, there's not been one.
Okay.
And there's been no call to tell us why there hasn't been one or any, so. So the first thing that we said we would do to try to correct it has not been done. As far as I know, you haven't had a meeting.
No, that first week that we had that meeting, and I did share this with, with Ron, that, um. The, the route supervisor was in contact with me by phone, uh, texted me, called me, uh, that first week. Cause we met, I think, on a Tuesday, uh, had that communication, I think, on a Thursday. Um, and I haven't had anything since. And he is aware of that.
Yes.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
We've also set up a backup system. So if the supervisor's on vacation or at a meeting, that there's somebody else that will, you know, reach out to the township. Who will let you guys know that he's not gonna be around, around and available that day and who the backup person is. Whether it's a supervisor or my ops manager or even myself. Um, we're actually setting this up with all the municipalities that we have going on. Like I said, this is completely unacceptable and not who we are. Um, I'm highly embarrassed by it, actually. I've been doing this for a long time and this is not how I run a business. So I, you know, I wanted to come tonight, apologize to you, to everyone, um, and make a couple of, uh, offers. To make things better, to help make things better. Um, one of them is to be, to have a shred truck come in. And set up on a Saturday where the community can all come in and bring any documents or anything that they wanna get shredded.
Let's talk these one at a time.
Okay.
That's not a big benefit because our politicians have them, real estate agents have them, most banks have a thing in the lobby. Would it be a bit of a help? Yes. But does it, does it negate the kind of fines that we're talking about?
It has more.
Cause I think you need to make that clear. You're recommending doing this in lieu of the fines.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so that, that really, unless anybody thinks different, I don't see where that's any big deal. Be nice, but we, we can certainly live without that.
I got you.
Go ahead. We, I figure we take them one at a time.
Talking to Todd yesterday, um, one of the things that he's concerned, uh, since every, since you guys went to card only. Is the lack of yard waste service. So what I, we'd also like to offer is a, a spring and a fall yard waste service. Where we would come through and run on Saturday and service the entire township and collect the yard waste, um, from anybody that has it out. And take care of that. We would run a few trucks on a Saturday to come through and hit all the residents in the, in the community. Based on whatever you guys wanna do it, we can set it up and schedule it with you to make sure that we're getting it, you know, to the biggest benefit for the.
That probably has some benefits because leaves are a big issue, as are, and I don't know how much it would take, but branches and things like that in the spring.
Yep.
So there's some issue there. I'm not sure that negates all the fines in total, but I, I think there's probably. Would be some interest in, in doing that.
Some other things that we've done is we've set up, um, we'll bring in dumpsters, uh, three or four thirty-yard dumpsters. We'll bring a rearload truck so we can pack material. Um, we'll have a stakebody truck to collect white goods and set up on a Saturday for. Four or six hours and man it ourselves so, and help the residents sorted out by metal, um. Regular, you know, just bulk items, um, white goods, you know, refrigerators, uh, stoves and that.
But they would haul that to a central location.
Yes.
Where now I can get you to pick that up by just making a phone call and I'm titled to one of those every week.
Yes.
So I don't, I don't know what the benefit is to that because it's more work because we gotta pick it up and haul it to you. So just trying to, to look at, is there basically kind of a dollar benefit to our residents in doing?
One question I have since, since we met yesterday regarding that.
I saw your hand, so.
Particular.
I'll get to you.
Particular option is, um. Another type of call we get is like someone wants, uh, carpet. Or an old toilet, old sink, old cabinets, two-by-fours, basically construction-type material. We get calls about that because, of course, that doesn't get picked up.
Okay.
Is that something that could be considered?
Sure, absolutely. What about electronics?
Electronics are rough. I'd have to look into that. Theres are hard to get rid of. Um, usually the, the Anfield's take those, but it's definitely something I can look into.
Well, one of the things we do have here is we have a local goodwill and they just started a month ago taking any kind of electronics to recycling. So I don't know if you were aware of that. They, but the goodwill right, right there at Shrewsbury Commons. They'll take any kind of electron, they'll actually take TVs if they work to sell, which they never did. But they are a recycling center. They combined with some group by forget who. Um, but they are a recycling center, so you can drop it all off there as well. But yeah, I know electronics are an issue for.
And I know that, you know, every municipality is different and I'm open to suggestions. You know, anything that would help, you know, the township, you know, that we.
Might be something that we all need to give some thought to. But I had a hand raised. Can, can I interrupt you for?
Actually, you know, I was thinking about it. I mean, you just talked to the Penn Waste gentleman first.
Excuse me, sir. I, I hate to ask this of you, but would you mind coming up and giving your name and address for the recording secretary?
Sure.
Thank you. Cause she will not be able to hear you back in the audience.
I've heard it'd be good to have that while you're there, so I don't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's fine.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for giving me time. My name is Saul Kachowski. I'm a three-three-six Stoner Road in New Freedom. And I think it'd be better if I dealt with Penn Waste first with the issue I had.
Okay.
You know, it's a little uncomfortable, but I think that, you know, they, they've done very well for us in the past, so I think I'll give them a chance to do something for us this time.
Okay.
But thank you.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. That's the other thing that's kind of frustrating here because you're not new to this territory. You had the contract for the last three years. But we know we're not dealing with any of the same people, so there's been a tremendous change in, in people. Maybe in drivers, maybe in people manning the trucks. I, I don't know that. We don't have that kind of detail. But it seems like a lot of new people. I know there have been issues in adjacent municipalities. Right now, I don't think they're as bad as we're seeing, but, but they did have their share too. So again, it would tend to seem that it's a kind of a personnel problem to a degree, a training problem maybe. I, I don't know. I'm sure it's, it's not an easy job, but, um, you know, the contract does require that we be advised.
Absolutely.
If something is missed. And I look at this big area and think, how did somebody not advise us that something was, was missed? Wouldn't there be something that would trigger that? I mean, you know, if you look at that, we have roughly, what, twenty-five-hundred plus or minus customers for trash collection?
Yeah.
So, and that's over two days. I don't know if it's evenly split, but if it is, that's about twelve-hundred a day. So this would be like twenty-five, thirty percent of the collections that just were missed and nobody knew it.
So this is completely on our end, right? And I know you know that, but what I'm saying is, is that the driver came in, he loaded out, he finished. He let the supervisor that was there know that he wasn't able to finish and that supervisor did not contact Ellis, who was the supervisor in this area. That's why Ellis didn't notify.
Cause the driver had to finish way early.
Um, on a Saturday, it's kinda different because everything closes earlier. So it's not necessarily, you know, he loaded out and then. What ha- should have happened was supervisor, he notified, should have notified the supervisor of the area. So that he could let you guys know, hey, we weren't able to get this. We'll be back Monday morning.
Now, there is also an incentive for, for the driver and whoever's with him to complete that route. Because they're not paid by the hour. They're paid, it's not by, we've always heard it's by the route.
No, they get paid by the hour.
So if they get done a route early, they don't get to, to leave free.
No, back in the day when I was a driver, it used to be that way.
Okay, well, that's good to hear because that just makes you.
It's by the hour.
That just makes, I mean, I, I do know they hustle in the area I am. I mean, they, they, you can't blame them for lack of hustle. They, they really. Move, move pretty fast.
Now, they, they wanna get done as early as possible, but, you know, it's not an incentive to get done as early as possible.
So the other thing, just to bring up that concerned us, it's Ellis. He's the route supervisor?
Yes, sir.
He told us he has twenty municipalities that he's responsible for.
That's a little, little much. We actually, we service sixty-eight.
Okay.
And we have ten supervisors to do that.
Okay. Cause if he really serviced twenty, I don't know how he could do that.
It wouldn't be possible.
Okay.
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be possible.
So he was exaggerating a little bit. I'm sure he just pulled a number and said, well, I got twenty, you know?
No, he, he's been with us for about four months. Uh, he's completely new to the, to the industry. Um, so we're trying to teach him as we go. Um, you met Rodney yesterday. He's my ops manager. He's working closely, hand in hand with Ellis, you know, to help teach him. And he's learning to, to count on the experience of the other supervisors that we have. Six of the other supervisors that we have are former drivers for us. So they kinda came up through the system and they learned, they know how to do it. They've driven. Rearload trucks. They've dri- driven automatic, automated trucks. So he's, he kinda came in and thinking, okay, I can do this and. So quickly realized it's not that easy. Uh, so he's learned to, to lean on the experience of the, of his teammates.
Uh, just for general information, where are you in automating the trucks? Because here are questions we get. We still have a lot of people that like the bags, you know? Um, mainly because they might not have storage area for the larger, um, containers or. You know, they gotta carry stuff from the back to the front and bags are easier.
Sure.
So we keep telling them, we, uh, but because the trucks are automating, but they aren't. Um, and surprisingly, in my area, um, for a while, it was serviced by a truck that had the big basket on the front. And they would dump into the basket and then dump it, but I haven't seen that in months. So when we tell people some of this is because of automation, they say, well, no, you know, there's still two people there. So they could pick up my bag as well as they could pick up my can. I don't, not saying we should change. It's just I'm trying to figure out how we answer people who bring that complaint to us.
So we service two hundred and twenty thousand residents in the York County, York, Lancaster, Cumberland, Dolphin County area. Um, since December of twenty twenty-three, we've purchased, the type of truck you're talking about, we've purchased fourteen of those.
Okay.
Um, we have forty of the trucks that you've probably seen them, they're the white trucks and they have the arm that goes out on the side and dumps. So we have about forty of those. Uh, we're planning on getting another ten to twelve of the, we call them Corrado trucks because of the bucket on the front is a Corrado bucket. Um, we plan on getting another ten to twelve of those over the next year or so. Um, the industry is going automated.
Well, we know that.
Yeah, I mean, like Republic doesn't even bid on stuff anymore unless it's automated and stuff like that. They can automate it. Um, Waste Management is kinda the same way. We realize that's not necessarily possible everywhere you go. So we're working towards that and there will be automated trucks in this area and the area around because. It's safer. You know, you don't have somebody on the back where somebody can run in the back of the truck and hurt somebody.
No question about that at all.
So we're definitely going in that direction. It just takes a little bit of time.
Well, that's kinda what we've been telling people.
Yeah, I have, I actually have eight routes that I can run every day. That I can put automated trucks on because they're already carted. They're already, you know, cart mandated and stuff like that. I'm just waiting for the trucks to come in. So we're training the drivers. We get them ready. So as soon as they come in, we'll be switching over.
And then you'll have just the driver?
Yes.
Then, when you do that.
And the good part about those kinda trucks are because they're right there and the bucket's right here. So if something happens, they just step out of the truck. They pick the toter up. If there's an extra bag there, they can throw the bag in. You know, if it's the large item, they can flip that in there. So they're a lot. They're a lot safer and a lot easier to use.
Right.
The only issue that you run into the, with those are the overhead, right? You have to make sure that when you dump that bucket, you're in a spot that, you know, you're not gonna hit wires or trees or something like that.
Right.
What the drivers learn out is pretty, pretty quick to learn.
In the industry, how long is it taking to get, uh, a new truck from when you order it?
It's better than, before COVID, it would take about six months. After COVID, we were years. Um, it's kinda starting to catch up now. Um, even last year, the trucks that we ordered last year, we're not getting until September or October of this year. But it's a lot quicker, so it's, it's catching up.
I just, I just asked because I know Shrewsbury ordered a, a new fire truck and.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
It's faster than a fire truck. Five years.
Five years?
And we, we ordered a new dump truck and that'll be till we get it, it's gonna be about two years.
Yeah, it's, we're getting to be less than a year now.
What's a garbage truck cost? Like four hundred thousand?
The, the truck, the Corrado trucks are five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. That bucket is thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It's, it's, they're expensive. But they're worth it for the safety part of it.
Anybody else have comments or questions? Or we, you know, we're gonna be looking carefully, so.
Absolutely.
Um, ho- hopefully the bulk of it is, is done and we can, um, depend on it. I think, um. I think as far as what might be done and, and, I, I'm not for totally forgiving all the fines because I think there needs to be. But I think we can look at potentially if there are some trade-offs and I don't think we wanna take a lot of time sitting here to do that. I think we can all think about that, what you're.
No, I, I agree because, you know, just talking about tossing some ideas around now, you know, might think of something tomorrow morning.
Plus, we may wanna, we may wanna see what happens in the next couple of, uh, the next month or so as, as well.
Yep, I mean, Todd has my information.
So we're not gonna take you down the road to the court and say, okay, you didn't pay the fines. We're, we're willing to look at that and see if there's some compromise we, we can make. If that makes sense to the board.
But you's gotta do better because the, the residents do not like it when their trash gets missed. And we hear about it.
I understand completely. But I don't like it either.
Cause they might, mine didn't even make the list.
Well, as, as I told them, the, these are the ones that we knew of.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm sure there may have been some streets that we didn't hear from people, but.
Unfortunately, my streets never missed, but you know, that doesn't mean it can't be tomorrow. And the other thing.
Well, I'll be honest with you. This was the first time we were missed. Well, I'll be honest with you, this was the first time we were missed.
Yeah.
But it's like, it was afternoon, the week before, you's missed a lot.
And the other things we've battled is like, there are HOAs, like where I am, you can't put your trash out until six o'clock at night. You got to pick it up kind of right away, you can't have your trash cans outside, they got to be in the garage. So, there are a lot of things that, that, you know, work, work against you when it doesn't happen in that timely fashion.
Yeah, because then you got to take it back in and bring it back out.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why we don't want to do that, trust me, we don't want to, why I would love to stand here and talk to you guys about, you know, baseball or something like that, I understand. And I appreciate you, you know, letting me come in and, and, and talk to you guys for a little bit.
Well, we appreciate that you did that, I'd say you're, you're a brave man to do that, but we appreciate that you did, and, um, I guess they call that falling on the sword in, in industry sometimes.
I'm their chairman, that's my tell.
But that's, that's what you do, or, or it's that come-to-Jesus meeting, and I guess that's kind of, we won't be as kind if you have to be in here again next month, for, for that reason.
Maybe I'll come back next month and say hi.
If you want to come in and say hi, that's great. Well, that's all I had, Todd, unless you have.
No.
Well, thank you for coming in, a very helpful force, it gives us some things to think about. I think the spring and fall cleanup, um, at Samaritan would be helpful throughout the township, and that's certainly worth something, because I know it would cost you something to do that. So, we'll kick all those things around and kind of come back to you with maybe a counterpropo, or a proposal or counterproposal.
Yeah, if you guys think of something, that'd be great.
We can sit down and talk about it.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it. We have two Stormwater, um, Operation Agreement, these are the standard agreements, Todd?
Yep, they're just standard.
Okay, nothing, um, special about them, so we can handle both of those in one motion, if you're so inclined?
I'm so inclined, if I may.
You may.
Make a motion to approve Stormwater Management Agreements for, uh, twenty-five-twelve Angus Court and one-five-two-three-two Elm Drive.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a second, questions, we shall vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, we have approved both of those. That just brings us to correspondence, you have, um, the latest LGAC newsletter. Have a couple things about, I guess we have the, um, gentleman that would like to see us put banners up like Shrewsbury Borough has with pictures of their service personnel, but we don't have electric poles and light poles like they do down Main Street, so.
It would only be, it would only be a brief extension of what they already have, most likely.
And there's nothing in the parks, we don't have any light pole lights there.
The other thing, I was talking to Art about it, I said, I, I, I find it difficult, and it might just be me and my eyes, but I.
They're up too high.
They're, they're hard to read.
Yeah.
They are, you can't, when you're driving, I can't read them.
And you're, and you're going slower and sometimes sitting at the light, and, you know, if they were like out here along the trail, you know, and you're doing fifty-five.
They're distractions.
Yeah, there's no way.
I mean, I'm all for doing anything you can to honor the people that have served, because that's quite a burden they've taken on, but it also makes sense, right?
We could actually put something in the newsletter, like a spotlight, or cut, cover certain, certain time periods or timeframes.
Yeah, that's an idea. Yeah.
But yeah, put, putting something on the road is more of a distraction.
Yeah.
Uh, danger, trying to figure out what the sign on the road says, instead of paying attention to the cars, so.
Um, I think you got an invitation to the grand opening of the Fine Wine and Good Spirits Store. And, uh, you also should have gotten, um, an email and invite to, um, well, to the, uh, Revolutions game through CS Davidson. Just a reminder, you have to RSVP by July twenty-second to them. I don't know if that's just, that, that this is, I think, a small skybox, I don't know if it's just the township personnel, or how, how big it is, I don't know.
I don't know.
I think the skyboxes, aren't they?
They're not that big.
Yeah, it's not like the big things we've had.
Twelve to fifteen tops, most, I would think probably twelve to fifteen people tops.
Yeah, so that's.
Well, some of them will hold a few more, some of them will hold more than that.
So, at any rate, if you're able to attend and want to attend, just note that you've got a little bit of time to RSVP.
Okay.
Let them know. Everybody has that information, right? That's all I have, unless somebody has something.
What would you do about Safe Harbor?
That's for your information.
What's that, though?
Is that Shrewsbury Township?
I suspect that they're.
Safe Harbor.
I suspect that they're required to.
I think so too.
Send that out to a certain range.
Is that the hazardous waste cleanup, Safe Harbor? What are we talking about?
The federal rate, Energy Regulation Commission.
It's about a dam, I guess, that, um.
Oh, Safe Harbor Dam?
Yeah.
Not at all what I thought we were talking about.
And I guess anybody within some distance probably has to receive a copy of it. And we don't have any, um, I was going to say, we don't have any public left, but we do, but we do have, um, as a last item, closing public comment, if you want to address anything.
Me?
Yeah.
No, I, I guess I could just address the fact I did deal with the issue anyways. They have been pretty good with me, I know I talked to Todd today earlier, and although they've missed quite a few in the past year, they've gotten better, so that, that's a good thing.
The bad thing is when you're kind of at the bottom, like they are right now, there's only one direction to go. You know, I, I think they'll get there, I think they just have some real people, they've lost a lot of people, and hard to keep people in that business, I guess, you know? So, I mean, we'll do what we can to help, and I think Todd's met with them many times and tried to do that, so, um. But if they don't come through, I mean, the contract calls for some very stiff penalties. Right now, I don't think it needs to be any secret, but looking at like sixty thousand dollars, that's a hard nut, I'm sure, for them to swallow. So, if they can do something else that benefits the community, I think we'd be willing to look at that and maybe forgive most of the penalty, but there needs to be something so they understand, you, you can't get away with this.
Well, I was saying, if they're going to do the leaves and brush, the yard waste cleanup, is that a one-time thing, or maybe they spread it out over several years?
I think the leaves and the brush, we would, Todd and I talked, we would want that to be for the duration of the three years.
Ah, okay.
The others might be one-time, but those, I think we would want, because that's something that people always come to us, what do I do with all my leaves? What do I do with the tree limbs that I had to cut down, or that came down?
Yeah.
During some storms or something, so that, that certainly does have value.
I think a lot of people would appreciate it.
I, I know, I think that would be good, so, we just kind of have to figure out, well, what is, what is that worth, and what's the right thing to do? But since it's new to most people, give them a, give the, everybody an opportunity to say, is there something else I can think of? Because I think they're willing to.
Yeah.
Kind of do anything to try to get out of most of the fines.
Sure.
Anything else for the good of the order?
Just a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're adjourned.
We're done.
Thank you for sitting.